Yes, I passed again. I'm so happy. Thank God we passed our OA today, yes. When I was crying, this is what happened. And do you see how long it took me to do the second, you know, basic web documents? This time taking the assessment, I was.
Okay, so I'm recording this now on StreamYard. So that way, when I'm ready to share my screen, I can just share it with you all. And it'll be like a little bit easier to like seamlessly go back to sharing my screen. Okay, so we are at the mail to. Okay, so yeah, that's what I wanted to share. So we said that the mail to an Ahrefs can be used to link an email to a mail to. So yeah, that's what I wanted to show just because I would rather do that and like, you know, be able to go back and forth. Um, so, okay, so shift five. Okay, so let's go to, let's look up mail to. Okay. Mail to. Ay, 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 that's not what I was looking for. Hold on. Okay, so anchor element. Okay, so we found it here. So this is what I was referring to. So when we're talking about an Ahrefs that can be used to link an email using mail to, um, this is what we would be looking at, which is using the Ahrefs. The A starts the anchor tag and then that gets us to that link. And then we can then use that to send, to use and, um, to use the mail to to forward whatever it is to this email address. And we're utilizing the anchor tag to do that. So, all right, so now special characters entities. An entity is a mechanism for writing special characters or symbols in HTML. HTML entity format, so the entity name, the copy. Um, this defines names for common well-known entities, which are typically English abbreviations for the symbol. A decimal number, which would be like an ampersand, a hashtag one six nine. Um, eight, every HTML entity has a unique number, which can be specified as a decimal and a hexadecimal number. Okay, and then this is HTML entities. So let's look over here for HTML entities. Okay. Um, so I think right. Okay, so this would be considered an HTML entity. And this would also be considered an HTML entity. Although I don't know what they mean. So hold on, let me find the ones that actually have like values. HTML entities. Okay. So I guess when we are, I'm gonna change what I'm sharing. And I'm gonna go ahead and share the tab. Okay, and then let's go ahead and go to W three schools. Because this is another resource that I absolutely love using. And you can find everything that you need here. Whether it's within the W three schools or outside of it, it'll always have some sort of reference for it. So yeah, this is what I was referring to. So the HTML entity names. And so these are gonna be, um, basically the descriptions for what they mean. So I had a list of just three in my notebook, but really there are a whole host of them. So the one that I had documented with like the one, um, with the ampersand copy, which would give you a copyright sign. So it would give you that C symbol, um, when you're actually looking at the webpage. Or, um, the ampersand, I think I saw one that was ampersand one six nine. Okay, yeah, so same thing. Okay, so yeah, that's what I was looking at. So copy gives you the C symbol. Um, ampersand one six nine also gives you the same, yeah, gives you the same symbol. So essentially you can write them either in a numerical form or like in a written form, and they all have a particular meaning. Moving on. All right, so non-breaking characters. A non-breaking character is an interword character that permits treating the words on both sides to be one word. So example, off ampersand hashtag H two zero nine. It displays as off campus because the hashtag H two zero nine is actually meaning a word. Um, which let me see. So a non-breaking character, so let's look that up, hold on. Breaking. Characters. Okay. Can this case, let me see. So you have H two zero nine, so a non-breaking hyphen is used to define a hyphen character that does not break into a new line. Okay, so yeah, so if you can see what I'm looking at here. Okay, so if you can see what I'm looking at here, this is in the W three schools. And yeah, basically this is going over, um, the non-breaking characters. So the span is styling the non-breaking character, which is right here, which just made the font size a hundred pixels and made it bigger. And then after these paragraphs here, these paragraph tags, where it says I will display, we have the non-breaking character, which is basically a hyphen. And so we see these hyphens here. And the, this here, this non-breaking character with the ampersand and the hashtag, this is what is actually the hyphen. Okay. So HTML containers. So the HTML containers, let me also, hold on, because I like to highlight this stuff too. So hold on just a moment. So non-breaking characters is an interword character permits treating words on both sides. Okay, and then the example and displays as with a hyphen. Okay. So now HTML container. So the containers and the parent containers. The container is any part of a web document that has an opening and a closing tag. So a parent container is a container in which another element resides. So parent container is container in which another element resides. And it's any part of a web document that has opening and closing tags. And this is for containers and parent containers. So common HTML container. So what are referred as HTML containers? A header. So header tags are considered containers. Footer tags, address tags, main tags, section tags, article tags, nav tags, aside tags. The aside one, I'm gonna read this one because you know what? These ones are kind of tricky because you know, like, um, how they talk about semantic elements and semantic elements being the elements that are descriptive? So like, like these ones, aside is not a very descriptive element. So you don't really like, from first, you know, hearing it, you don't really off rip know what it does. So the aside element, this is the container for content not directly related to the main topic of a document. I don't know if I've really used aside tags, but I might try and use it just to see like what it looks like. So a matter of fact, I'm gonna pull up chat GPT in just a minute. And then, um, in also the MDN doc, so we can go over the aside, the aside tag too. Um, so the container for the content not directly related to the main topic of the document. A div tag is an HTML container. Span is an HTML container. Okay, so the div could creates block containers. The span creates inline containers. The header is for introductory content. The footer is for the content descriptive information about the webpage, like the author, copyright, or date modified. The can, the address is the container for the person's or organization's contact information. The main tag is the container for the document's primary content. The section tag is the container for the distinct parts of the document, such as a chapter. An article tag is the container for the self-contained content that can be reused independently, such as a news article. A nav tag is the container for the content related to the website navigation. So like a navigation bar or like a burger menu. So content relating to website navigation. Okay, so block elements. So block elements can be categorized as either block or inline. A block element fills up the width of the element's parent container. So I'm gonna repeat that. A block element fills up the width of the element's parent container and can contain other block elements, inline elements and text. So an example of block elements would be an H one tag, a table tag, a paragraph tag would be categorized as a block element. So let me look this up, hold on. Give me just a second, let me look this up on MDN docs. So block elements. Okay. All right, so block elements. Okay, so now I guess we can also maybe look here. So block elements. HTML blocking inline elements, okay. So, so on W three schools, it says the block level elements always start on a new line. The browsers automatically add some space, a margin before and after the element. A block level element always takes up the full width available. So it stretches out to the far left and the far right. So not the height, because I feel like that's something important that like I always have to remember because sometimes, you know, like it gets a little confusing. So just remembering that like the block element will always fill up the width, not the height, but the width. So stretching from the far left to the far right, it'll always fill up the entire width of the browser. That's for a block element. So which means that if we are styling a block element, it would always fill up the entire width. We would then likely start with styling the width first and then going into the height depending on the size of, yeah, like the amount of content that's within the element. So a block level element always takes up the full width available, stretching out from the far left to the far right. And the two most commonly used block elements are paragraphs and divs. So the paragraph element defines a paragraph in an HTML document. Correct, yes. And then the div element defines a division or a section in an HTML document. A paragraph element is a block level element. The div element is a block level element. So let's take a look. Okay, so block level, so it stretches from all the way to the left, all the way to the right. And this is whichever size the browser is, that's where it's gonna stretch out. So this is the block elements. And basically, we're looking at the block elements for the paragraph and the div. They would always stretch from the far left to the far right, taking up the whole entire size of the browser. Okay. So, all right, so now, and then these are block level elements in HTML. So yeah, like we went over all of these tags. I don't know what this one is, though. DL tag. Description list, okay. All right, well, good to know. Um, let me see, hold on. Okay, wait. Okay. All right, now let's go back here. All right, so now inline elements. So an inline element does not start on a new line. An inline element only takes up as much width as necessary. So this is a span element inside of a paragraph. So when we're doing span, this is an inline span hello world inside of a paragraph. The span element is an inline element and will not start a new line and only takes up as much width as necessary. So that is an inline element. Okay. All right. Okay, so got that, okay. So the div tag breaks up the document into logical components. So the div tag breaks up, breaks up the document into logical components. Some block elements cannot be contained within certain other block elements when the semantics are unclear. Um, a paragraph element cannot contain another paragraph element. I don't know if that's true though, because I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure you can create a paragraph within a paragraph. Oh, okay, I understand. Okay, so yeah, so some block elements cannot be contained within, within other certain, um, certain other block elements when the semantics are unclear. So yeah, paragraph elements cannot contain another paragraph element. Um, okay, so some block elements cannot be contained within certain other block elements when semantics are unclear. Paragraph element cannot contain another paragraph element. A block element is typically displayed, starting and ending on new lines. So block element is typically displayed, starting and ending on new lines. So an example of that would be an ordered list tag is a block tag. So it fills the entire width of the parent container. Okay. As it should, filling it up from as far left and as far right as the width of whatever container it is in. So a div element is a generic element for creating block containers. So a div element is generic element for can, for creating block containers to facilitate managing page content. And is the only block element with no semantic meaning. So is the only block element with no semantic meaning. Inline elements, an inline element fills the minimum space possible in the element's parent container and can only contain text or other inline elements. So an inline element fills the minimum space possible in an element's parent container and can only contain text or other inline elements. So an example of an inline element would be an anchor tag. So an A tag is an inline element that creates a hyperlink and does not go from one line to the other, nor does it extend the full width of its container. A span element. As we, yeah, as we just looked at, is a generic element for creating an inline container to facilitate managing content on a page. Okay, so, um, all right, got that. All right, so now we're going into the forms. So the forms tag, it allows the web browser to submit information from the user to the server. The form tag has two attributes. So the form tag has two attribute. It has the actions attribute. So let me look this up here, hold on. So forms. And actually, so we'll do forms. Attributes. Let's see. Okay, so the form tag, so maybe, hold on. Form tag. Eh eh, hold on, forms tag. Maybe this one. Form tag. Okay, so this is the form tag. And it says it has an actions attribute. Let me see if I can, if I see the attributes here. Cause I don't see the action attribute. Okay, so let's, let me just take one more look here, hold on. Form tag HTML. You see, W three schools has everything, babe. I mean, honest to goodness, listen. I'm finding it on W three schools over, over MDN docs, you see? So actually, yeah, babe, W three schools is that girl. Um, but the HTML form tag, so, okay, so we're looking at the HTML form tag. It has two attributes. So the actions attribute, which is right here, that indicates the URL where the form data should be sent. So it indicates the URL where form data should be sent. So this right here, that means that we would then be submitting whatever information they submit within this form would then be like, it would be sent as a, um, generally it would be sent as a POST request. If we're taking in the information and the person is submitting, yeah. So we would then submit it, um, and then by that method. So that indicates the URL where the form data should be sent. And typically, the URL uses HTTPS. So the form is encrypted. HT, so HTTPS, websites with HTTPS means that whatever data is being transferred is, is encrypted and HTTP does not encrypt. The method attributes, so where the method right here, that indicates the HTTP request type that the browser, so it indicates the HTTP request type that the browser will use to communicate with the server. So the method, the method is either GET or POST. A GET is the default method if none is specified. Now, the GET method, the technique is, the GET method is the technique used by a web browser to submit information to a web server by altering the URL of the HTTP request. So the query, so let me see, okay. To create and send an HTTP GET request. And the GET request essentially requests the information from the website. Um, okay, so this is the technique used by a web browser to submit information to a web server by altering the URL. And the POST request, the POST method is the technique used by a web browser to submit information to a web server by sending the information in the HTTP request body. So the GET request is the act of sending the information through the URL. And the POST method is the act of sending it through the HTTP request body. So, um, like in my last position, we worked a lot with postman and we would always, um, utilize postman to essentially update a database. And we would update the database by sending a GET request to a URL to an API endpoint essentially, that would send the information back with all of the information in the body. And then in order to update the database, we would then alter the information in the body in the JSON response and then send a POST request back to another API endpoint and that would update the database. So it's kind of the same thing where like that POST method is allowing you to submit that information to a web server and then you're sending it in the body, um, of the request rather than in the URL. So when a user clicks submit, the browser performs the following. It creates an HTTP POST request using the URL form from the form's action attribute. So this attribute right here, then it creates a query string from the form data. So for example, it would say, um, if we were sending a POST request, it would say first equals, you know, Sam, last equals explorations. Um, and those would be like the query parameters, which is the information that you would have submitted in the form. And then we would place the query string in the HTTP request message body and send the request. And then we would display or update the webpage using the HTTP response received from the server. So if a form contains binary data such as an image, the normal format of the query is not sufficient to encode the data. A POST request can be split into multiple parts. The forms tag, ink type, attribute, value, multipart form data indicates the web browser should split a POST request into multiple parts where each input field is sent as a separate part of the HTTP request method. So it can be split into multiple parts for a POST request. And the forms tags, encoding type attribute, you can set the value to multipart form data. So, and then once you do that, then you're able to in, indicate to the web browser that you can split a POST request into multiple parts and each input field is sent as a separate part of the, of the request. Okay, so now form widgets. Oh, so a form widget is the widget. Um, the widget is an interactive component that browser uses to interact with the user. Okay, and then the input tag allows the user to enter information. Okay, I'm sorry, let me go back. So the form widget, a widget is an interactive component and it's usually graphical that the browser uses to interact with a user. The example are buttons, dropdown menus, data entry fields. So that would be considered a widget. And then the input tag allows the user to enter information into a webpage. So actually, right here. Okay, so the input type here, that allows the user to enter the information. So the input tag allows user to enter information into webpage. And the input tag itself has five attributes. So it has five attributes. It has the type attribute, which indicates the widget type. So common types include text, password, submit, or button. Um, the name attribute names the widget and sends the widget's value when the form is submitted. The ID attribute is used to give a widget a unique identifier. So there, the ID is F name and so F name for the ID and, uh, L name for the last name. And then the placeholder attribute specifies the text that first appears in a text widget, typically for giving the user a hint as to the expected value. So this one doesn't have a placeholder here, but I'm pretty sure actually if we do this here, um, let me see. Name, and then I think if we do placeholder equals, um, let me see, first name. I'm pretty sure we can run this. And yeah, you can see here that the placeholder allows you to basically just put a default text in, inside of that widget. And then the value attribute specifies the default value for a widget. Now, a text box widget is an input element with an attribute of text that allows users to enter a single line of text. Um, okay, so a text box widget is an input element with an attribute of text. And it allows the users to enter a single line of text. The submit button widget for an input tag with an attribute type of submit sends the form's data to the server when it's clicked. type of submit sends the forms data to the server when it's clicked so here where it says value in the input type as submit that widget is used to send the forms data to the server when it's clicked okay the labels and text areas so the label tag displays descriptive text associated with specific widgets the four attribute should match the ID attribute and this is for the labels and the text so the four I'm sorry so it said that the the four attributes should match the ID these ones don't but you know yeah they do actually okay so no that's what I mean they do so yeah so the four should match the ID in terms of the labels and the text areas for forms and then a text area widget and so the text area widget I believe it just gives you um oh I'm sorry I wasn't even sharing this tab the whole entire time guys so um yeah no so I was saying that the four and the ID these match over here right um and then what I added earlier are you guys literally didn't see it my bad I'm still new to this to this um like live streaming type of software so please bear with me um but yeah so what I had typed in earlier I typed in placeholder earlier and it was able to populate the first name basically so that way it would give um like a default text inside of the box so that was that was earlier um but yeah so we're talking about the text area widgets so the text area you see how these are like text like text boxes so the text for the input type it gives you these boxes but the text area gives you like a whole entire like a whole entire box that you could write like a paragraph in so let me um go back here and see if I can find the text area um the text area tag okay sharing this tab instead um okay so yeah alright sharing this app okay so we're sharing the right tab now alright so this is the text area tab so if we go to try it yourself so this is what the text area element looks like um so this is what the hold on okay so this is what the text area element looks like here um so it looks like a bigger box where you can actually write like a paragraph inside so this is the widget and it's an input element so this is an input element specified by the text area opening and closing tags that allow users to enter multiple lines of text the text area tags have rows and column attributes to specify the initial size of the text area the default value for the type is text so no attribute must be set to create a text box widget so even if you were to just not put any type in there it likely would just give you a text box as the default um so now we're moving on to common form widgets so a checkbox so now let's go over here let me see so common form widgets form widgets form widgets just get enough form widgets okay hold on because what is going on here hmm okay well I don't wanna you know unfortunately you know spend too much time but I will try and see if I can pull pull something up and just add it to this video to show the form widget so a checkbox is a widget for input elements with the type attribute of checkbox which allows users to check or select a value so a checkbox is a widget for input elements with the type attribute of checkbox which allows users to check or select a value example the input type of checkbox um checked creates a checked checkbox the checked attribute is an example of a Boolean attribute so Boolean attributes are basically the attributes where when you set it you don't set a value it's either yes or no so essentially it's kind of like a toggling on or off type of attribute where it's either yes or no so checked or unchecked and then a checkbox will initially appear selected if the checked attribute is set for each checkbox selected the browser sends the checkboxes name and value to the server so for each checkbox selected the browser sends the checkbox name and value to the server so good practice would be to use label elements with checkboxes so the user can click the label to check and uncheck the associated checkbox okay radio buttons so a widget for input elements with the type attribute of radio allows users to select exactly one value from any values okay so I think I kind of got HTML down for the most part so you know um the radio button so we got the input types of radio right so with the radio buttons with being able to kind of click those little circles um when you're selecting options within an HTML form um or yeah an HTML um document you would be able to select potentially one option out of multiple options and then we have the dropdown menu that uses the select tag so either you can do um the option tags and those create a value or an option the user can select within a dropdown menu when the user is not interacted with the menu the dropdown displays the selected option um and then we have the list box which is a widget created by specifying a size with the select elements size attribute so you're selecting um and again when you have the select it'll give you a dropdown box you can either do select and you can also do select and multiple and it allows the person to be able to select multiple options within a dropdown um so buttons button widget can be created using the button tags with the input type button um the password field a widget for input elements with the type password which allows users to enter a password without the contents displaying on the screen so this one would be the input type password the field set tag so this groups related form widgets together and draws a box around the related widgets and this is called a field set the legend tag defines a caption for the field set so the field set is basically the title no one of my neighbors just texted me and I'm like trying to figure out what what is it that she's trying to say cuz she's she's like um I just wanted to and like baby what now what is the baby girl wh- what is it but okay give me just a second actually because um I have like some stuff hold on hold on wait wait okay so picking up at form widgets so additional form widgets there are the date picker so input type is date you then can select um a date input type color allows you to click on a cu- it creates a color selector pop up that helps the user explore and choose a color number picker if you do the input type number um that ensures the user input is a valid number the range input the range widget allows the user to select the value by dragging a sliding control and that's input type range okay so now we're at combo box so a combination of a text box and a dropdown list into a single widget so this is a combination of a text box and a dropdown list into a single widget and it's created with an input an input element um which creates the text box so a data list element provides the dropdown menu list options um so the combo box so this is kind of what it would look like so if we do the we would do an input list and then we would do a data list and the data list um would then give you multiple dropdown options so it would give you multiple lists with all of the options um so a combination of a text box and a dropdown list okay so yeah this is just a combination of a dropdown and a and a and a a dropdown and a text box so I don't know if you can see this but this is what it looks like so combination of the text box and then also a dropdown menu so when my printer was working I was literally like screenshotting and printing I don't know my printer's been kind of weird with connecting to the internet lately so you know I had to kind of write you know write everything manually going you know towards the end but yeah for now it's it's yeah it's it was pretty good while it lasted um so the specialized text input for input types exists for entering text the URL for typing the URL the input type would be um yeah so telephone if you needed to enter a phone number the type email if you needed to enter an email so on and so forth okay so now we're gonna say the date picker allows the user to enter a day month and a year the month input picker allows the user to enter a month and a year okay and then also within these um within these act within these options they also have attributes such as max length max min pattern required and step so the max length sets the maximum number of characters the max um the max sets the maximum value that the input can have the min sets the minimum value that the input can have the pattern provides a pattern that the input must mash the required states that the input is required and cannot be left empty and the step sets the amount by which the value can change okay and then um fallback and polyfills so it says fallback is a mechanism that allows a webpage element to function correctly even if the browser doesn't support the element a polyfill is a fallback using JavaScript that makes certain HTML features work on browsers that do not natively support these features okay so audio and video so the audio tag plays so the audio tag plays audio file in a webpage the source tag is used inside of the audio tag to specify the audio file and the audio attributes are autoplay so that's a Boolean attribute that makes the audio begin playing automatically controls which is another Boolean attribute that displays the audio controls for the user to play pause and control the volume a loop the which is another Boolean value but this replays the audio upon reaching the end of the audio and muted is a Boolean attribute that initially mutes the audio so generally users are not jolted um okay so generally it would look like an audio tag which is you know basically like the actually let me let's just look at it yeah so audio tag so this is what it looks like here okay so this is the audio tag here so this is what it looks like so an audio tag and whatever control so if it was autoplay um if it was you know controls the controls basically will display the audio it'll display the audio control right here when you set the audio for controls um and then the source it would then pull the the audio file and then you would specify what type of audio file it is okay and then common audio formats AAC advanced audio coding um so that's designed to be the successor of the MP three format with better sound quality so designed to be successor of the MP three with better sound quality and the MP three um which is the sound portion of an MPEG file and then dot OGG which is an open source audio coding format developed by the XIPH.org foundation it's XIPH.org foundation um okay so now no audio controls are displayed if the value um if the controls attribute is not set so no audio controls will be displayed if this is not set so just delete that and then you'll see it's no longer there the AAC and MP three are ideal for playing audio because the formats are supported by nearly all web browsers the browser will download the first file format the browser supports and now the video element the video element so video element displays video on a webpage the source element um is used in video tags to specify the name of video file to play now the source element is used in a video tag to specify the name so yep right here it has the source um and then the common video formats same thing we ran over the MP four which is the MPEG the old dot OGG dot web M um and yeah those are audio those are audio files so yeah those are audio files I was about to say dot MOV but nope these are audio so now the width and the height attributes can define the video display area some browsers like Chrome will not autoplay unmuted video playing videos uses significantly more network bandwidth so playing videos uses significantly more network bandwidth audio and video elements can be controlled with JavaScript can be controlled with JavaScript showing YouTube videos a YouTube video may be embedded in a webpage with the iframe element so YouTube video may be embedded in a webpage with the iframe element and so now let's look this up here iframe element okay and then this is the iframe tag okay so this is the iframe tag so iframe element here so we're gonna try it ourselves and then this is what the iframe element looks like so the iframe element the iframe element allows a webpage to be embedded in a rectangular area of the current webpage the iframe element uses the source attribute to specify the URL of the webpage to display the width and the height attributes that define the weight and the height pixels of the rectangular iframe so let me see hold on let me read that again the iframe element uses the source attribute to specify URL of the webpage to display width and height attributes that define the weight and height pixels of the rectangular iframe youtube.com so Youtube dot com, so, let's. So now script and style tag, okay, so the script tag allows a webpage to include executable code. Okay, so the script tag allows, um, so yes, and now I'm on section three, the script and style. So the script tag allows a webpage to include executable code. Browsers will assume script is JavaScript unless indicated otherwise, so the script tag allows. A webpage to include executable code. Browsers will assume the script is JS unless indicated. The style tag allows the webpage to introduce presentable directives. Usually with CSS, the style tags are placed in an HTML document prior to the body tag. The style section is designed to describe the presentation of the entire document. Okay, so now, we're gonna go over the developer guidelines for HTML, this section three point seven, so. Use closing tags, avoid self-closing tags, the self-closing tab is, tag. Is an open tag that also closes by putting a forward slash at the end of the tag. Okay, use quotes for attribute values, so use quotes around attribute values. Um, and then use Boolean attributes concisely, so Boolean attribute um is. Is present, is true when present and false when absent. And same thing, audio. Autoplay or something along those lines would be considered as. A Boolean, so start block elements on new lines. So block tags start on new lines. The, um, so we're indenting, we're indenting nested elements consistently. Nested elements should be indented at least two spaces. Always provide labels or placeholders for widgets. Separate content from presentation and functionality. Good practice not to use embedded or inline CSS in JavaScript. Use CSS for layout. Tables designed are designed for holding tabular data. Okay, and so now, um, some additional HTML, the document object model, so the DOM. This is the data representation of the objects that comprise the structure. And content of a document on the web. So again, the document object model, the DOM. Is the data representation of the objects that comprise the structure and content of a document on the web. So now, let me go back here for a second, and then let's just go look up the DOM really quick. Okay, so, okay, so it doesn't really have. Alright, so maybe. Okay, so the DOM, document object model, so it is an API. Okay, so, so it connects, okay, so the document object model connects webpages to scripts or programming languages. By representing the structure of a document, so such as the HTML representing a webpage in memory. Usually it refers to JavaScript, even though, even though modeling HTML SVG or XML documents. As objects are not part of the core JavaScript language. The DOM represents a document with a logical tree, each branch of the tree ends in a node. And each node contains objects. DOM methods allow programmatic access to the tree, with them you can change the document's structure, style, or content. Nodes can have event handlers attached to them, once an event is triggered, the event handlers get executed. Okay, and then, alright, so then we'll say here. So right, so the DOM would be such as like the query selectors, um, so. Yeah, so it's the document object model. And it essentially controls the data representation of the objects. So it's the data representation of the objects that comprise the structure and content of a document um on the web. So, programming interface for web documents, it represents the page, so it represents the page. So that programs can change the document structure, style, and content. The DOM represents the document as nodes and objects, where programming languages. Interact with the page. Okay, and then I did some example. Okay, so now, okay, so now we're gonna briefly go through XML, so XML, introduction to XML. So XML is a markup language, so let's look up XML now, let's see. Okay, so XML is a markup language. So XML is a markup language that can be used to structure and format any kind of data that has multiple purposes. So XML is case sensitive, because it is used by applications other than web browsers. These applications require formal definition of terms. XML is a way to attach information to text, it behaves like a highlighter. XML files can be understood as a hierarchy of tags that categorize parts of text. That categorizes parts of text. XML is more versatile than HTML, with XML you can invent whatever tags you want. And add as many tags as you want to highlight the information in your code. And it stands for, again, extensible, and not with an X in the beginning, but with an E. XML stands for Extensible Markup Language. Okay, so now XML tags can be nested. They must contain a root element that is the parent of all other elements. In this case, the root element would be note, because that is where all of the other elements. Are located, which are inside of this main element of note. UTF eight is the default character encoding for XML documents, all elements must have a closing tag. Comments are the same as HTML, so the comments which are, um. Okay, well, I don't see it here, but. Okay, but um, yeah, so the comments are the same as HTML. XML is also used to create webpages and web applications. XML is dynamic, because it is used to transport the data, not for displaying the data, so it's dynamic. Because it is used to transport the data, not for displaying the data. This is one of the questions that did come up on the practice OA. What is XML, like, what's the comparison between XML and HTML, and this was one of the questions? It is used to transport data, not to process data, not anything else, but to transport data. Not for displaying the data, it is dynamic, whereas HTML is static. XML is extendable, you can create all of your own tags. Whereas HTML is static and has its own tags, you cannot freestyle and create your own tags with HTML. So CSS, so now CSS is a textual language for describing how a webpage is styled. For visual presentation. So the process of combining multiple, so the cascading, cascading is the process of combining. Multiple style rules and resolving conflicting styles. So developers use CSS to write a list of rules. CSS rules consist of a selector followed by a declaration block between braces. A CSS selector specifies the HTML elements to which the specific style rule applies. A declaration block contains declarations separated by semicolons. A CSS styling declaration is a CSS property followed by a colon and a property value. And so these are parts of a CSS rule. So these are parts of the CSS rule, this is the selector. This is the property, this is the value, and this is the declaration in the block. Applying CSS, CSS can be applied three different ways. Inline style, inside a style attribute in the HTML file. And so the CSS can be applied three different ways. So inline, which is inside of a style attribute in an HTML file. Embedded in a style sheet, which it places the CSS rules in an HTML document. Using the style tags, an external style sheet, which places the CSS rules. In a separate file that is imported into an HTML document with a link tag. Good practice is to place style and link tags inside the document head. So, style and link tags, style and link tags should go. Inside the document head. An external style sheet can be imported into all the website's pages to keep fonts, colors consistent. Updating the external style sheet updates the entire website, so updating external style sheet. Updates entire website. Inheritance and conflict, so the CSS style declarations override the default style declarations. Override default style declarations. The style declarations from a parent element cascade down and are applied to the child elements called inheritance. Each element inherits the style declarations from the element's parents. So elements inherit the style declarations from their parents. The element's parent inherits the style declarations from the parent's parent element. And up to the top level of the body elements. The span tag can be used to markup text or part of a document similar to div. But span is inline instead of block level. CSS can use the inherit keyword. That specifies a property should inherit the parent element's value. The style declarations from a parent element cascade down. And are applied to the child elements called inheritance. So we have the basic selectors, so the selectors are the element selectors. Which matches the elements with the specified element names such as paragraph, div, oh, actually, let me turn the light on, hold on. Better, 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 I think so, alright, alright, so the element selector matches the elements, um, and then same thing, like I said, the element selectors. Would be like curly brai- um, you know, paragraph, you're selecting a div, you're selecting, um, the body, whatever it is. Between the, uh, before the curly braces, the class selectors specified with a period character followed by the class name. That matches the elements that have the specified class name, so the classes start with the period. So if you're looking for the class within HTML, it would be like dot whatever the name of the class is. The ID selector specified with a hash character, and that's followed by the ID name, it matches the elements that have the specified ID. So when you're selecting an ID, it would be hashtag and then whatever the ID is in terms of selecting it within CSS. The descendant selector specified with selector followed by a space and another selector. So this matches the elements contained in another element, so the descendant selector specified with a selector. Followed by a space and another selector. So meaning if you are looking for, let's say, um, all of the paragraphs within an H two. You would write it as, or I'm sorry, all of the emphasis elements within an H two, you would write it as. H two, space, E M, and then your, your curly braces and your properties. So that's kinda what it looks like here. That's the example. Alright, so now a pseudo-class selector specified with a colon followed by a pseudo-class name matches the elements based on. User behavior, so such as hover, um, such as link. Um, and other types of pseudo-classes, you would utilize a semicolon and then the name of the pseudo-class. And so now the pseudo-class selectors, they match the elements based on the user behavior. Or meta-information about HTML elements, so the types of pseudo-selector, the types of pseudo-class selectors. Would be enabled, which means when the element, um, when the element is enabled. Hover, which would be if a user is hovering over that element on a webpage. Empty would be if the element has no child's elements. And lang, which would be if the element contained text in a particular language. Advanced selectors, so the universal selector specified using an asterisk. So the universal selector is specified using an asterisk and it matches all the elements in a webpage. The universal selector is implied when an element name is not specified. So the universal selector is implied when an element name is not specified. So example, dot highlight and star dot highlight match exactly the same elements, but star. Dot highlight explicitly selects the universal attribute. And the multiple selectors specified using commas to separate the selectors matching. All of the listed elements to apply a style rule. So the child selector, so the child selector, this is specified using a greater than between two selectors. So it matches any elements where the second element is a direct child of the first element. So the example would be in the event that you were searching for a span. That is the child of a paragraph element, which means that it is contained within the paragraph element. You would then write it as P with the greater than symbol and then span, and that would then select. All of the span elements that are children of the paragraph element. The sibling selectors are elements that share the same parent element. So these are specified using a tilde character between the two selectors. This matches the second element if it occurs after the first element. And both elements are sibling, so if they share the same parent element. Which means that if you are looking for an H one and a paragraph that share the same parent element. You would then write it as H one tilde paragraph, and then we would then be searching for. The H one and the paragraph that are within the same parent element. And it has to be a direct parent, not a grandparent, but the direct parent element. The adjacent sibling selector is specified using a plus character between two selectors. This matches an element that immediately follows another element. So where both elements have the same parents, so in this. So in this case where it precedes it, if we were looking for the first paragraph. So let's say we wanted the first paragraph after an H1. Not all of the paragraphs that are siblings of that H1, but the paragraph that's right after that H1. We would then write it as H1 plus P. And that would, that would indicate that we're searching for the paragraph that is immediately preceding the H1. And this would be right here. Okay, and combinator CSS selectors that match specific relationships between other selectors. The descendant, child, adjacent sibling, and general siblings selectors are all combinators. Alright, I had to, uh. I had to, um, charge myself, yeah, I had to charge my computer. I have to plug it in, okay, alright, so combinators are CSS selectors. That match the specific relationships between other selectors. The descendant, child, adjacent sibling, and general sibling selectors are all combinators. Attribute selector, so this is specified with an attribute name. And an optional value comparison enclosed in square brackets. So this matches the elements with the specified attribute. Um, so the example would be like target equals blank. Um, or, um, and then in that situation, the attribute selector. We would do the same thing where we would do button type equals submit. And, um, we can select different attributes. So let me show you here. So even the relational attributes, if we have them in our elements in HTML, we can select them. And so these are the different attributes. So like if you needed to select button, if you wanted to select input. If you wanted to even select a relational attribute. If you wanted to select an alt attribute. And they are within the square brackets. So you would write it the same way, square brackets, the type. And then the curly braces and then your values. Okay, um, okay. And then the pseudo element selector, this is specified with two colon characters. So the selectors, these allow the styles to apply to the first line or the first letter of an element. That is selected by the user. Or additional content to be inserted before or after an element. So the common pseudo element selectors would be the after. So the two semicolons and after that adds content after the matched element. The before adds content before the matched element. The first line matches the first line of the text in a block element. The first letter matches the first letter of the text in a block element. And selection matches the text selected by the user. So, common properties, so we have the color property. The color CSS property changes the text color to a specified color value. Um, so we got that and then the RGB, we can also select the RGB. This specifies the color using the red, green, blue function by indicating the intensities of the red, green, and blue colors. Each intensity ranges from zero to two hundred and fifty-five. That is also a question that came up on the OA and on the simulation. Hexadecimal specifies a color, so the hexadecimal specifies a color using the. Um, hashtag R R G G B B format and same thing giving those. Um, intensities and those intensity ranges from zero to two fifty-five. I believe, I'm not sure, I don't know. But yeah, so either way, the hexadecimal specifies the color using the R R G G B B format. The background properties, every element in a webpage has a set of background properties. So every element in a webpage has a set of background properties. The web browser first draws the element's background, then the element's content. So web browser first draws element's background, then the content. Background color property specifies the background color. The background image property specifies the background image. The background property is shorthand for setting several of the element's background properties at the same time. By default, the initial background color is transparent and the background image is none. Which means the element's parent background will display underneath the element's content. The URL function indicates the location of an image. So background image, and then we could use URL. And the name of the file. Now the float properties, CSS properties float and clear. Control how the text flows around an HTML element. It makes the webpages look like magazine articles, text wraps around the images in the page. Okay, so it makes the webpages look like magazine articles and the text wraps around the images on the page. The float property specifies whether the element will float to the left or the right of the element's parent container. So left, the element floats to the parent's containers, left side, right, it floats to the right side, none, it does not float. The clear property can stop elements from floating, both, no elements are allowed to float. Left, no element allowed to float to the left, right, no element allowed to float to the right. And none, no elements allowed to float within that container. The display property, it controls the layout of an element on a webpage. Um, so inline displays the element as an inline element like a span or an anchor tag element. Block displays the element as a block element like a paragraph, H1, or div. None hides the element from being displayed like style elements. Inline block displays the contest, the contents of the element as a block element. But formats the element as an inline element. List item displays the contents of the element as a list item element. CSS variables, so custom CSS properties, so this is a custom CSS property that defines a value. A CSS variable is declared in a CSS selector that defines the variable scope. A CSS variable can have a global scope. So a CSS variable can have a global scope by declaring the variable in. The root selector, okay, targeting the highest DOM element, the HTML element. So we would then just select it as root and then create those global variables. So CSS variable is declared in a CSS selector that defines the variable scope. Okay, and then in that case, we would also be utilizing the var keyword. So the same thing as setting a variable in JavaScript, you would use the var keyword. Um, and then call a global variable if you wanted to. Um, otherwise, you would just be creating the variables within that root folder. Okay, so font and text properties. So CSS properties include the font family that specifies the font family. Um, font size, which changes the font size, the font weight. Which specifies whether like it gives you every option in between bold and normal. Font style will give you normal, italic, or anything in between. Font variant, um, specifies the variant of the text such as normal or small caps. Font, uh, will be the shorthand for setting several font properties all at once. So the style, the size, the font family. Yeah, I believe the style, the size, and the font family. Um, and then the font family contains a list of fonts specified as a font name. The family name would then be the name of the specific font and the generic family would just be a generic group of fonts. So the web browser will use the first font listed that is available. General family names, there, um, are serif as a font family, sans serif as a font family, cursive. Fantasy, monospace, those are all considered, um, general font family names. Web font CSS feature that allows custom fonts to be downloaded to the web browser. Um, the font size can be specified using a predefined size name. A relative name or a number with an absolute or relative size unit. Um, the predefined size names are XX small, extra small, small, medium, large, extra large, XX large. With medium being the default. The relative size names are smaller, larger, and those are related to the font size. These change the font size for an element to be smaller or larger than the font size of the parent element. So an absolute size is a size that is fixed. And independent of other CSS sizes. So an absolute would be considered centimeters, millimeters, inches, pixels, points, pica. Because these are not correlated to any other element. And essentially, this size is, is just relative to the element that it is applied to. A relative size is a size that is relative to another element's size. So EM is relative to the element's font size. Rem is relative to the root element's font size. View port width is one percent of the viewport's width. Viewport height is one percent of the viewport's height. And percentage is still a percentage of the element's font size. And so when we're looking at the relative size too, in terms of, um, how to calculate it. Cause that was another thing that I, I don't, I was, you know, didn't realize when I first took the OA. Was also like, you know, the calculation. So if you are calculating something that is two EM of whatever the font size. Keep in mind that that is multiplying, which means that if you're looking at, um, two EM, you know, of a. Element's font size that's twenty, you're gonna be multiplying that by two. For the rem, you would be multiplying that by whatever the rem is. So whatever the size that you are looking at, you'll be multiplying that by the size of the rem. The one percent, you would be actually multiplying that by, you know, zero point one percent. To actually find that one percent of whatever the viewport width is. Um, so if you were gonna be given an example of ten VW. That would be ten percent of the browser's width. Um, if we're looking at the VH, the viewport's height, one percent of that height. We would then say as an example, if it's five viewport heights, then that would be five percent of the browser's height. The percentage, same thing, if we're looking at the percentage of the element's font size. Um, we would then, if we're looking at a hundred and twenty percent, we would say it's twenty percent larger than the current font size. Okay, so the web browser will use the first font listed that is available, oh wait. Did I already review this, I already reviewed that page? So text properties, many CSS properties control how text is displayed. Some common CSS text properties include text align. So text align, it changes the horizontal alignment of text for an element. So the horizontal meaning the side by side element of the text. So, gimme just a second, hold on, text align. So let's look at that for just a second. Okay, and so text align property. Okay, so yep, so text align property, so we're setting the text align. This changes the horizontal alignment of text for an element. So the values can either be left, right, center, or justify. And then let's take a look, okay. So, text align, and this is horizontal. So this will always be changing the alignment from left to right. Not from, not, not top to bottom and not up and down. So this is not a vertical alignment. Text alignment will only ever, will only ever have to do with, um, the horizontal alignment of text. So that was another thing too that kind of tripped me up that I needed, you know, to really clarify on. So horizontal alignment of text. So when we're looking at the center alignment, this is where we're getting that it's center aligned horizontally. We're looking at the left text align, we're seeing that the text is left aligned horizontally, right aligned horizontally. And then technically, the justify is left aligned horizont- horizontally. So when we're looking at, um, the text align, so yep, this is center aligned, this is left aligned. This is right aligned, and this is justify. Okay, so now when we're looking at, um, the justify, hold on. Because the only other thing too though is that I kind of, um. Yeah, I kind of like. Text align, hold on, text align. Justify. Alright, so text justify, so. Okay, so text justification is off, it has the same effect as not setting it at all. Demonstration of the different values of text justify, so none. Okay, so when we're even looking at the differences between text justify. For the most part, they look the same, but. What types of justification? Well, nothing else to go there. So now text decoration can add or remove text decoration like underlining or align through. So the values are overline, line through, underline, and none. And so this is for text decoration. Okay, and this is text decoration. So this text decoration, okay. And so these are the values here. And then as we're looking here, this is the heading, so this is the overline, that's the line through. This is text decoration for the underline, and this is the underline and overline for that one. So now we're gonna look at text transform. So text transform, um, converts letters to uppercase, lowercase, or capitalized initial letters. And the values are uppercase, lowercase, or capitalized. Now text indent, the property specifies the first line's indentation amount. Um, text decoration none is commonly used to remove default underline from links. The justify alignment value stretches spaces, so each line of the text fills the width of the element. Now the box model. Now the box model. Okay, so the CSS box model, so the box model components. It describes the size of each element as series of nested boxes. So for me, I kind of like just created an acronym in my head so that I can remember. And it's CPBM, which stands for content padding border margin. CPBM, CPBM, CPBM. Content padding border margin, okay? So that helps me remember. So that helps me remember creating that acronym to remember the box model for CSS. So the box model, it describes the size of each element as a series of nested boxes. The margin box contains all three boxes and adds a transparent area around the border. Inside the border, inside the margin is the border. Inside the border is the padding, and inside the padding is the content. The content is the innermost box, and it contains the content of the elements such as text and images. The padding is the, it contains the content box and adds a transparent area around the content. The border box contains the padded content and adds an optional colored area around the padding. Okay, so CPBM. Content padding border margin. An explanation of the different parts, the content, same thing. So the content, the content of the box where text and images appear. The padding clears an area around the content, the padding is transparent. The border, a border that goes around the padding and the content. The margin that clears an area outside the border, the margin is transparent. Now, the CSS properties that control the padding, border, and margin are the padding. So the CSS properties that control the padding, border, and margin are the padding. So this specifies the padding thickness. The border specifies border thickness, style, and color. And margin specifies the margin thickness. The content, padding, and margin boxes are rendered following these rules. So the content displayed with a background according to the element's background color. So the content is displayed with a background according to the element's background color. The padding is transparent and will be displayed using the same color as the element's background. Border can either be, border can either be colored or transparent if transparent. So the border can either be colored or transparent if transparent, the border is displayed with the same color as the padding. The margin is transparent and will be displayed using the background color of the parent element. So margin is transparent, border can either be colored or transparent. If they're transparent, everything is going to essentially be displayed with the element's background. The box sizing, the padding and margin properties may have one to four values. This was another tricky part for me because this was something else that I also created an acronym around because it was a little bit tricky for me to remember. So the padding and margin properties may have one to four values. So when it has one value, it specifies the uniform thickness around the box, meaning that if you see like margin, so let's say, yeah, so. Okay, so in this case where if you see a, you know, margin with just one value, this specifies the thickness around the box. So this would specify 20 pixels of thickness around the box. If there are two values, this specifies the top and the bottom, and then the right and the left, okay? So if you see a margin of 10 pixels and 20 pixels, that means that the 10 pixels is going for the top and the bottom, and then the 20 pixels is going for the right and the left. Three values specifies top, right, left, and then bottom. So in this case, if you see a value with, if you see a margin with three different values, the first value is specifying the top thickness, the second value is specifying the right and the left thickness, and then the last value is specifying the bottom. And then four values, this one I created an acronym for, and it helps me to also remember the other ones. So this one I specified as TRBL, which is top, right, bottom, left. So when there are four values, it would specify top, right, bottom, and left. So when you're looking at a margin with four different values, the first value is the top, the second value is the right, the third value is the bottom, and the last value is the left. The padding, border, and margin CSS properties can apply only to one side by adding a negative top, negative left, negative bottom, or negative right suffix to the CSS property. So an example of that would be a padding, padding, negative top, semicolon, 5X. It specifies 5 pixels of padding above the content. So content width and height. Oh goodness, excuse me. So the content width and height, a block element's content spans the width of the enclosing parent element by default. The content size can be changed with the width and height CSS properties. Width specifies the content width, makes the content 20 pixels wide, specifies the content height. Width and height cannot be changed unless the inline element's display property is changed to inline block. Research computing sizes, if margin has a single value, multiply by 2. So research, okay. So if margin has a single value, multiply by 2. And then the Chrome Dev Tools, they display the margin, border, padding, and content sizes for all elements. Now, the border styles. The border property combines the border with style and color. Each CSS property may also be specified separately. Border width property specifies the border width, specifies a border that's 5 pixels thick in the example of a border width that is 5 pixels. The border style property specifies the border style. So if the border style were dashed, it would specify a border that is dashed. Border color property specifies the border color. So in an example of a border color that is green, it would specify a border that is green. And then there are other common border styles with styles such as solid, dashed, dotted, none, double, groove, ridge, inset, outset. And you can set the style and the color and the pixels with the sizing. Now, margin collapsing and horizontal centering. So vertical margins of two elements can sometimes combine or collapse into a single vertical space. Horizontal margins never collapse. Okay, so side, yeah. So margins would combine in that case, they don't collapse. But vertical margins of two elements can combine or collapse into a single vertical space. When an element has the margin property set to auto, so when an element has the margin property set to auto, browser will compute the left and right margins to use up the remaining width of the parent element. The auto margin is useful for horizontally centering, for horizontally centering an element in the parent element. If two elements, so if two elements are stacked on top of each other and both have a margin of 20 pixels, the vertical adjoining margins collapse into a single 20 pixel margin. The text align, center property horizontally centers text. Horizontal. CSS units, so the CSS units are used to define the page element length like font size, height, width, border, among other properties. The page element length is represented by a number, integer, or decimal. So in the example, it would be a width of 1 centimeter, height of 30%. Another point is the number can be positive or negative. So absolute units, same thing, can consist of physical measurements that are not, that are fixed, not related to any other properties. So centimeters, millimeters, quarter inches, pica, points, pixels. Relative units are Ms. So 2 times the size of the font X, the actual height of the font CH, the width of 0, rem, the font size of the root element, 1% of the viewport, 1% of the view height, Vmin, which is the smaller dimension, Vmax, which is 1% of the larger dimension, and a percentage, which is the fraction of the parent element. And then we already went to the relative unit, so. To calculate, hold on, let's see. Let me pause this for a second. Alright, 30 more, 30 more minutes until I take my OA. I'm taking it at 12:30, it's 12:04 now. So yeah, let's get to work, y'all. Alright, so relative units. So it says calculate the value of the line height in pixels, multiply the font size by the line height. And this is to calculate the value of the line height in pixels. You're multiplying the font size by the line height, okay. Alright, so now we have pseudo-classes, the nth child, so yep, they're well aware of those. So the nth child selector selects child elements according to their position, okay. So now we have the flex box, we have, yep, the flex box. So a fixed layout uses a fixed width container to envelop the webpage content. Fluid layout allows the page contents to fill the browser, sometimes by using percentages for width. Fluid layouts make better use of the available space and do not produce a horizontal scroll bar when the browser is resized. Wireframe, a blueprint for a webpage that shows how future content will be arranged. The HTML uses common containers like header, footer, and the CSS. Determines the height, color of the containers. The max width is useful to keep a fluid layout, yep, from expanding too wide on very large monitors. And then the flex box. So flex box container and items is the CSS layout mode that provides an efficient way to lay out elements in a container so the elements behave predictably when the container is resized or viewed on different screen sizes. Flex container, an element that has the CSS property display set to flex to create a block level flex container or inline flex to create on an inline flex container. Flex containers hold flex items. The flex items are the child items of a flex container, and they are positioned and sized according to various CSS flex box properties. Only when using display flex does the flex container items appear side by side and on the same row. Removing the display property makes the flex items fill the container on separate rows. So flex container properties would be the flex direction. It defines the direction of the flex items within the container using the values. So the row default, it would start on the far right. Row reverse would start on the far right. Column A, they would be from up to down, and it would start at the very top. Column reverse would start at the very bottom. Gap defines the space in between the flex items, so you can set that as a particular pixel. And then justify content justifies the flex items within the container using the values. And remember that we said generally justifying content or anything like that would only ever align those things horizontally and not vertically. Flex start would just be same thing, starting from left to right. Flex end, starting from left to, you know, left to, left to right, or right, yeah, no, so I'm sorry. Flex start, right to left, flex end, left to right, center, middle to middle. So flex wrap determines if or how flex items wrap onto multiple rows when the container is not wide enough to hold all the items. No wrap always displays images on the same row. The wrap flips everything upside down, and the wrap reverse upside down, and then also reversed. The flex item properties, a flex items width is determined by the combination of three CSS properties. So flex basis, which sets the initial length of a flex items default value and makes the flex item the same initial length as the content. Flex grow sets a proportion that determines how much of the available container space should be assigned to the item. The default is generally 0. Flex shrink sets a proportion that determines the minimum size of the default is generally 1. So then we would say the shorthand property flex specifies the flex grow, flex shrink, and flex basis. And they're all set to default value. So the example would be example flex and then semicolon flex grow, flex shrink, flex basis. This is the example. Now, um, okay, so if, okay, so now an example of this would be mains flex grow. So if it flex grows 3.5, that means that it, now this, the particular section would be 3.5 times the width of the other sections. So we would then. Let me see, hold on. So mains flex grow, so we would, so that means that if it's growing, it would be 3.5 times the width of the other, of the other portions, of the other elements within that section. So then we would add flex grow across all the other items. So if we have two other items, flex grow, flex shrink, and flex basis, we would add one for each one. So this would be the width. Okay, and then we would divide that from 100, and then we would get the percentage of, yeah, so basically if we're calculating the flex grow, we would then get the percentage of how much that element would now take up versus how much the remaining elements would take up in that container. If you understand, I'm trying to figure it out myself, but this is the example. It was, it was one of the participation activities in the, in the, in the class. So I just wrote it down, but I don't know if you can, you know, if you understood what I was saying, but you can take a look at it and just kind of, you know, review like how I, how I talked about it basically when it came to that participation activity. And I think this would have been in like section 6 or something, the CSS section, yeah, because right now we're at 6.2. So yeah, this would be likely around the CSS section. So alright, grid layout, the grid container and items. So the grid layout, the CSS layout mode that divides a webpage into a rectangular grid in which to position page elements. It's ideal for designing two-dimensional webpage elements. Grid container, an element that has the CSS property display set to grid to create a block level grid container, or inline grid to create an inline grid container. Grid item, a child element of a grid container that is by default placed into a single grid cell. A grid template column property defines the grid container's number of columns and optionally the width of each column. So grid template column, so this would be all of the columns and how big they would be. So specifies four values. That creates four columns, so the first would be 50 pixels wide, second 90 pixels, and then last two are auto-sized to fit the remainder of the grid. Now, when we're controlling the grid container, the default behavior of a grid container can be modified with the various CSS properties such as gap property. So the gap, it puts a gap in between the rows, and the first one is for the rows, the second one is for the column. Grid template rows defines the height of each row. So grid template rows makes the first row 20 pixels, and then the second row 40. Justify content horizontally aligns the grid items inside the grid containers. And it uses the values start, so it aligns grid flush with the grid container's starting edge. And the end aligns the grid flush with the container's ending edge. Okay, and then the center aligns the grid in the center of the grid container. Stretch stretches the grid items to fill the container with this space around places equal spacing between the grid items with half the space on either side of the grid container. Space between places equal spacing between grid items with no space on either side of the grid container. Space evenly places equal spacing between grid items, including the sides of the grid container. Align content vertically aligns the grid items. Align content vertically aligns the grid items inside the grid container using similar values as above. Justify content and align content properties have no effect unless the grid width or height is less than the grid's containers. With, with or height. Controlling the grid item placement, so grid item by default appears in a single row and column based on the ordering of the grid within the grid container. The grid items may be positioned at specific grid locations using the column line and row line numbers. So a grid item may be placed in a specific row or column or span multiple rows and or columns using the following CSS properties. So grid row, it lists the grid items starting and ending row line numbers. Group, so example is grid row semicolon one three makes the grid items start at row one and end at row three. Grid item now spans two rows. Grid column lists the grid items starting and ending column line numbers. The grid column one through four makes the grid items start at column one and end at column four. So now the grid items now span three columns. Okay, so now the grid area is it lists the grid items starting and ending row and column numbers. So grid area makes the grid items start at row line one and column line two and end at row line three and column line four. Good item now spans two rows and two columns. Naming grid items, so two rows and two columns. So one, two. Okay, yep, so one, two, one, two. Okay, so row, column, row, column. So now when it's four, it would be, yeah, so basically row start, column start, row end, column end. Makes the grow item start at line one. Okay, and then grid items may be assigned names with the grid area property. The grid containers, grid template areas property specifies the grid layout using the named grids, grid template areas. Render grid as expected. So position properties, the position has four possible values, static, relative, fixed, absolute. Static is default, leaving the elements relative, relative to the default position. Fixed is relative to the viewport. Absolute positions the element relative to the nearest ancestor. Okay, and then debugging, um, so yeah, debugging is, is relatively pretty simple. So yeah, I think I went, I went through these, I went through these. So fix positioning, um, okay, so let's see. Okay. Positions places the element in a fixed location in the viewport. Scrolling does not move the element. A viewport is the visible area of a web page. Absolute positioning, the position is based on the nearest positioned element that uses fixed. If no position element exists, the element is positioned relative to the document body. Z index property uses to specify a relative distance that orders the appearance of elements. Okay, so yeah, and then this talks about the z-index. So the higher the index values are placed on top of the elements with the lower the index values, and that's in regards to like the display. Um, okay, so now the special effects. So we have offset X, which is the horizontal, so the text shadows that are added to the text within the CSS property. So blur radius, color, vertical pixel offset of shadow is offset Y because when we're considering, um, like animations or anything like that with CSS, where we're thinking about it on an axis. So if we want any sort of like offset of color on the X axis and we want it to be horizontal, select the X, if you want it to be vertical, you select the Y. Um, positive offset shadows, when the offsets are zero, the shadow appears to make the text glow. The larger the blur radius, the more blurry the shadow. Um, box shadow, the CSS property adds a shadow to the box. So we can do inset, which draws the shadow inside of the box. Offset X, horizontal pixel offset of the shadow. Offset Y, vertical pixel offset of shadow. The blur radius optional shadow blur. The spread radius positive values causes the shadow to grow. Negative values to shrink. Color optional shadow color, um, and the default is the current CSS color. The rounded corners, um, okay, so yeah, so border radius is for the rounded corners. And then we said the single values for all four corners. Two values is for the top left and the bottom right. The second, and then so when there's two values, the first value is for the top left and bottom right, second value is for top right, bottom left. Three values is, first is top left, second is right, top right, bottom left, and third is bottom right. And then the four values would be top left, top right, bottom right, bottom left. Each corner may also be assigned a radius using for CSS properties. Okay. So border images renders an element's border. Um, so specified by border image, the border width will not appear unless the border width property is non-zero and border style is set to any legal value except for none and hidden using element width for border image. Slide shows the entire image. Um, linear gradient, so those linear gradients transition from one to the other. The radial gradient is the round one. Um, okay, repeating linear gradients. Those just repeat the gradients, um, and then you can select what colors they transition from and to. And the percentage, um, and then positioning radial gradient, so you can also position them. The center position can be specified using at where, so you can start it at a particular pixel and then start it from there, and it would start from the center. Animations transform an element's style. So when we're looking for animations, we're creating, um, the keyframes. So the keyframe, it contains, so the CSS animation behavior is defined with the keyframes rule, which contains a keyframe list. The keyframe list has a name and contains the keyframes, the properties, and the values that are gonna be animated. The keyframe selectors, it has a starting state, so a from state and a to state. Um, and the percentages may be used to specify keyframes at various points during the animation with zero percent being equivalent to from, one hundred percent equivalent to two. The timing and the iteration, so we have the ease, which is the slow start, fast, and then slow end. The linear, which is the same speed throughout. The ease in, which is the slow start, the ease in and out, which is the slow start and end. And the cubic bezier, which specifies numbers that control speed based on a bezier curve. Um, other animation properties, animation iteration. It indicates the number of times an animation will run. The value infinite runs the animation repeatedly without stopping. Animation iteration runs the animation three times. And, um, it runs the animation, you know, a certain amount of times. Animation direction indicates the animation direction. Um, so normal, reverse, alternate, alternate, reverse. Animation shorthand property indicates the name, the duration, the timing function, the delay, the iteration count, and the direction. Um, so example animation semicolon move three seconds, linear two seconds, infinite, normal. And, or an example of an animation that says move four seconds, ease one second, two reverse. So two indicates the iteration count, animation would run twice. The transitions animates an element's transition from one state to another when an element CSS property changes value. So a transition may animate an element getting wider. Um, they're commonly used with the hover pseudo class to trigger an element. The transitioning timing function, same thing, the ease linear ease in, ease in out, cubic bezier. Okay. All right, you guys, I think I am ready for my OA, so let's do this. I'll be back after I pass. Yes, I passed it, yes, I passed. Y'all. I'm so happy, like, I'm so happy. I'm so happy. Y'all, y'all understand, my heart is beating so fast, like. I'm telling you. I'm so happy, I passed my, I passed my assessment, I passed my class. Like, y'all saw me in tears in my last video, cuz yo, when I tell you, I was just like, ah, I really needed the time, I needed the time to dedicate to my studies. I really like, there was just so much going on. And honestly, I will never do that again, like, I will forever, like, when life takes over, when life happens, I'm gonna give myself a break, I'm going to give myself patience, and I'm gonna give myself grace because in my last video, I had come home, you know what I mean? Like, we found out a family member passed away. I was in training, um, at work, you know, at a new job, fatigued, exhausted, commuting two hours to and from. And, you know, I came home and I pushed myself when I really should have been like, you know what, babe, it's okay. Like, that's the whole purpose. As to why you are going to WGU, that's the reason. Because you know that you're an adult and real stuff and real life stuff is happening right now. By the grace of God, we passed our OA today, yes! We passed, yes sir, we passed the OA, yeah! Like, I want y'all to take a look, okay, that night when I was crying, this is what happened, and do you see how long it took me to do the second attempt? And I don't care, this is real life, okay? I had a lot going on, I really needed to take the time to be able to have time to study, to really be able to focus. And I'm just, I'm so, I'm just so happy, I'm so, did my thing. I did my thing, and I absolutely like gave this my all. So there's that. So yeah, even still, it looks like I'm still tech, I was still technically in the approaching competence part of the web documents. But the difference between this, um, objective assessment and the last one that I took was that you see, and there was, I think that there were probably different questions on this test pertaining to the web documents, some of which that came up that I really was not aware of. Um, however, the difference is that because the CSS is fifty percent of the assessment, even though I technically was approaching competency on the, you know, basic web documents this time taking the assessment, I was competent in the CSS, um, the CSS this time around, whereas I was still approaching competency in both the CSS and the software problems, the last one. This time, I scored exemplary in the resolve software problems and competent in the CSS and the advanced CSS.